Hey everybody, it's 11:55 in the east, which means it is 8:55 in the west and in Oakland and Las Vegas. And this livestream is devoted to Oakland and Las Vegas. And the number of questions that you all have asked about what happened last night. Basically, this is what happened last night. It's to refresh your memory of the debacle on Twitter, for at least from an Oakland perspective. You get the idea. This produced a number of reactions, negative, from my Dave Cavall, what the blank? And then, why are you showing us this? And you probably have seen these before, chances are, if you look here now, looking at it. This one I love by Bay Area Sportsner, two thumbs down. But why did he do it? I, like you, thought, hey, it means they're out of here. Hey Mohammed, how you doing? What'd you think of the tweet? I thought it means, hey, you know what? They're out of here, okay? And of course, there is no reason to believe otherwise, because it was done in the middle of his fact-finding trip to Las Vegas in search of a new stadium. Basically mirroring the process that Mark Davis used to find a new stadium, property or land for a potential new stadium at the time in Las Vegas, which he did do in this now called Allegiant Stadium. And there are a ton of bad feelings about that still to this day. The wounds are fresh from 2017. And in the middle of that, Dave does this. Now, what I've learned from listening to Dave on the podcast I'm about to present to you, not in full, but just a bit part of it is, and it's very important to read between the lines of what Dave says. Because he said, he made it clear. He made it absolutely clear that he stayed only once, but he said, this is driven by the league. In other words, this is Major League Baseball telling him what to do. This isn't what Dave Cavall necessarily wants to do. But he wants to do it to keep his job, okay? So what he is doing is at the behest of Major League Baseball, and by extension, his direct boss, which happens to be the owner of the Athletics, and that's John Fisher. That's why Dave went on this about-face shifting of behavior that made him look like something like Linda Blair from The Exorcist, when she was possessed, okay? Seriously. Mohammed says Clark County, Nevada would be foolish to bring this joke in an organization to Vegas, talking about, of course, the Athletics. He says Clark County is broke from Raiders and will take time for things to recover financially. They are ready, they're really in the red. I caution everybody that Clark County, like a number of municipal organizations in the United States, received American Jobs Act funding needed to help them cover civic costs. So they're not in as bad a shape as they were prior to the Biden Job Act. And of course, now we have the Investment Act as well, okay? But let's shift from Twitter to the comments that were made by Dave Cavall when he appeared on a Barstool podcast called Starting Nine today. And I'll pick it up right where Dave starts talking about this very subject of this tweet. Here we go. It's the Starting Nine, it's called, I like, I like the name of it. It's the Starting, Starting Nine podcast. I'm not really a fan of podcasts in general. I've been on Blog Talk Radio for 10 years, I'm just not a fan of it, but that's me, okay? But hey, look, we have somebody like David Cavall on who can, you know, talk about it. And why not? Why not? You've got Carrabis and Dallas Braden as the hosts, and they claim this is the podcast that everyone wants, but no one else will give to you. Baseball podcast at least, okay? So without further ado, here is Oakland Athletics President Dave Cavall. It's a snippet of it that we can use for news commentary purposes, not the whole thing at all, by far.
Because last night, as A's fans are watching their green and gold do battle with the Seattle Mariners at the Coliseum, knowing that the front office is on this fact-finding mission to try to continue to educate themselves on the best possible move to make. There was, there was a tweet that you sent out, and if I'm being honest, when I first caught wind of the tweet, saw the tweet, initially my response was, or my thought was, dude's having a great time. Look at the energy of that ballpark, or look at the energy in that barn, that stadium that they're in, the place that they're in, the facility. He's having a great time because of the energy he's surrounded by. And knowing you, knowing the conversations we've had, I had to believe, and I thought initially, which I still believe, this is coming from a place where he wants this energy in Oakland, and he knows that it can exist there in Oakland. And he right now is probably just really, really fucking excited about the energy he's feeling and thinking about this being present in Oakland.
Well, well, our fans deserve that type of experience, and they deserve a venue that can offer that. And I've done everything in my power over the last five years to make that happen. And we're hopeful that that can happen in Oakland at the waterfront, but it's out of our control. You know, obviously it has to be approved by the city council. So in many ways, what people need to understand is, you know, when people see a tweet or interaction, I'm communicating not only to our fans, but I'm also communicating to the elected leaders in Oakland to understand that, hey, it is go time. You know, we're in the ninth inning, and we need to see if this thing can happen. You know, we put an incredible offer on the table. We think the waterfront ballpark can be tremendous, but we need a partner who's willing to take us there. And, and that, that may happen, you know, it's like, you know, I'm-
Now I want to stop right there, just as a response, okay? He said he intended that for the Oakland City Council as well as A's fans. Well, if he did, he didn't say so, it just says, wow, Stanley Cup playoffs, Golden Knights, that's it. It doesn't say, hey Oakland City Council, or hey Oakland Mayor Libby Schaaf, we can establish this kind of atmosphere in Oakland. I think what really happened was he got there, might have had a little bit of fun, a little bit of whatever that is ginned up by the raucous crowd, and everybody's happy to be back to, you know, some, similar to normal, where they're together and yelling and cheering and all that sort of thing. Got caught up in the moment, and boom, he threw that out. I think that's the more direct explanation. Not, I'm not saying that Dave isn't honest in his explanation, he is, but what he has to deal with is the fact that what he did was based on an emotion. And he did it in the middle of sensitive negotiations, and he didn't handle it right. Okay, there's no other way to explain this other than that. He didn't handle this situation correctly. I mean, if you're going to go to an event like this, and, and you're going on a fact-finding tour, first of all, that's the first problem. He's got several problems. First of all, he's in the middle of negotiations ostensibly to stay in Oakland, yet he's someplace else, okay, at the same time, which sends a bad message. And then he claims that he wants to have, he claims that he wants to have a positive vote from the Oakland City Council. Well, if you add up his actions and statements, for the most part, he's, he's driving himself to a no vote. And this is the ultimate example of that possibility. I mean, the message that, just because he sends a message to the Oakland City Council, doesn't mean the council is going to receive it as he intended. Because they're not sports fans, which is, I think, a big problem. You have some who are, you have some who, like Carol Fife came in District Three and initially said, well, I care about the homeless, and I don't care about baseball, forgetting if she ever really realized that this is economic development and the way SB 293 Skinner has written, this could give her the check, if you will, to help solve the homeless problem in Oakland, because the resultant revenue throw-off would be that large, all right? I understand why Dave would be upset, but to me, it should be just simply cut and dried. If you're not gonna deal with the city of Oakland, just say so and move on, but don't try to walk a tightrope. Because if you do, the way you're handling it, you're already slipping. And people are just now, like myself, watching you on the tightrope, because you haven't called me for advice. And I have 30 something years of experience at these development projects right in Oakland with the politics, okay? So you haven't asked me. And I'm just saying that right out there, right up front. You can talk to Barstool Sports and everybody else, but you haven't talked to me. So, and the way, and that's why I'm, you know, delivering that. And then something else that Dave did, that he first said he wasn't going to do, and that he didn't like it when Oakland Mayor Libby Schaaf did, is he was actually starting to negotiate through the media. What this is, I don't care what anybody says, all right? This is another form of negotiating through the media. So three weeks ago, we have Dave Cavall, why do everything, you know, behind the scenes? And then Major League Baseball and John Fisher get to him and turns around, and oh no, he's got to shift, and he's got to do it in a way where he's got to send out a tweet that doesn't explain the message. There's an old saying of read the room, right? And that saying, it's not really that old, but read the room was typed a number of times on Twitter. Dave, read the room. In other words, not just the room that you're in there, but the room that you're in in the situation. Okay, so let's finish hearing what else he's got to say regarding, regarding this matter of this tweet in the ballpark.
I've always been a very optimistic person, and we continue to fight for that every day. But by the same token, we've been directed very clearly by the Commissioner's Office to have other parallel paths in process. Because without that, you know, we're, we're running out of time, man. Like you're there at the stadium with me, you see the light standards not working, you see the water overflowing.
I want to stop right there before he finishes, because this is Dave's peeve, and I'm right there with him, all right? He told me that they gave the Coliseum $30 million regarding lights, and the lights went out, and the electricity went out. And he was rightfully peeved. So you start adding these, these problems with a facility that is treated, I'm talking about the Oakland Coliseum, it really is treated like it's a glorified high school gymnasium. The way we, as a city of Oakland, the county of Alameda, have handled the Coliseum over the years collectively is shameful. It's, it's as if, okay, it's as if we are lazy. Myself, everybody, okay, collectively. Because the people who really want to make a difference are not allowed to be there. And the people who really aren't equipped to make a difference are there making the decisions. And I'm just laying that right out there. The, the city of Oakland leaves its best people on the beach for petty personal reasons and consistently trips itself up. And what happens is what we get in these facilities, particularly our Crown Jewel Coliseum, which really is worth billions, but we don't treat it like that. And then we expect our sports organizations to stay rather than look someplace else or act in a different way. And so, look, I'm not absolving the city of Oakland from any of the wrongs that it has done. But it's a golden opportunity for Dave to get it all right. But instead, just because Major League Baseball said, hey, you got to find a new place, he didn't think strategically. He decided he was going to do his Linda Blair Act, and that's not helping. It's in the middle of a pandemic, yet we're coming out of it. But also, you've got a state of California with a $75 billion surplus, which if Dave and Major League Baseball are really thinking, they would say, gee, how can we tap in to Major League Baseball for help? How can we get Gavin on our side? How can we help Gavin get re-elected so we can make sure that we get Gavin's help? Did that happen? Nope, at least not, they didn't make it clear. Dave hasn't made it clear, even in spite of the fact that Gavin Newsom signed into law items of legislation that will most help the A's. Dave Cavall, Dave has, has, has forgotten that. It's like, huh, what? Oh, and Major League Baseball should be made aware of it. I don't care if Bob Manfred is the commissioner, Dave Cavall ought to have enough cojones, if it takes that, or just simply honesty of emotional presence in a managerial situation to say, hey, Commissioner, you know, we have a golden opportunity here in California, and I want you to give me leeway to handle it politically as I see fit, because I don't want to blow what we have searching for other sites. I want to do this strategically and smartly. But just by Cavall's actions, it's clear he didn't do that, and it's clear Major League Baseball didn't ask him to do that, okay? So there are a lot of screw-ups all around here, not just with the city of Oakland, and not just with Dave Cavall, but also with Major League Baseball. And this is not the first time that Commissioner Manfred has stepped in the Oakland situation. You know, basically put his foot in his mouth, and I'm not going to go on a, a recall of that right now, because it's going to take me off of what I want to present to you. He says, I wish he had the type of, there you go. And, hey, how you doing, Eric? So anyway, my point is, let's continue with what he has said here.
Yeah, that, that's not an acceptable experience for our fans, for our players, for our community. That, that's, that's unacceptable, and we owe it to everyone involved in this effort. I owe it to everyone involved in this effort to do everything I can to advance a new ballpark in a way that makes sense.
Sure, and, and, and I guess what I'm, what I'm asking is, because I do have the benefit, Dave, of knowing you on a personal level. I do have the benefit, as I said, standing shoulder to shoulder with you and listening to your message to leaders, to city leaders, to city council leaders, to folks at the state capitol, to, to fans. I've heard it all, and I, I've got a solid feel for what we're trying to execute here, what, what you and the front office are trying to get done. So I guess my question is just to kind of isolate the feeling of the fans from what they saw last night. It's just, do you, do you have an understanding and can you kind of see where the fans come from? Because they're saying, we want to be here too, and we understand there's a lot going on outside of our control. And man, we have really rallied behind the cavalcade, because he has, for the past five years, rolled his sleeves up and gone to work and gotten us to a place where we have never been in this conversation. And that's something that I have echoed to the fans during this entire, as you said, saga over the last 20 years, is right now, today, take stock of where we're at. Are we as close as we've ever been to getting to where we want to be? And the answer to that, in my mind, is a hell yes, and you're part of that. And that's why I ask on behalf of the fans, can you understand maybe where they're coming from? When they're stuffing nachos and, and ballpark food in their face at a Mariner game at the Coliseum, and they see our team president tweet what he tweeted? And again, you and I understand that there is some reading between the lines there for the fans, like, hey, fans, I want you to be shoulder to shoulder and seat to seat next to your maniacal neighbors, losing their mind underneath the stadium lights in Oakland. And I understand that as well, but for the fans who might not have gone there initially, can you, can you give them anything to kind of say, hey, I understand where you're coming from, but, but this is, this is where I was coming from?
Well, Dallas, I think it's important to note that we have not announced removing the team to some other market. We're playing in Oakland, we're fighting, we're fighting harder than any team ever to make a waterfront ballpark a success. The other two teams left without even an effort, and so we will continue to do that. And I think what we're trying to do is we're trying to demonstrate what's possible with the new venue, which I think is something that is, we're like 10 years past when it should have happened, you know, Dallas, in all reality. So I mean, in many ways, we should have been in a new stadium when you, when you threw your perfect game, you know? It's like, it's incredible how long this has taken, and we owe it to everyone to bring this to a resolution, one way or another. And I know that's hard for people to sometimes hear, because the change is hard and it's scary, but it's also what has to happen. Because where we are now, the venue, it just cannot support a team for many more years. You know, we only have a lease through 2024, and we, we need an answer. And we have some really good options for waterfront ballparks, it's probably finance, and we're hopeful that that gets approved. But, you know, we have to look at what's happened and how long it's taken, and really understand that we need to have a couple of options available. And MLB, I think, feels the strongest that that has to happen, because in the best interest of baseball, there has to be a home yard for the Athletics.
You know, this is what I don't understand, okay? He dropped off, he dropped in, okay, in, in 2017, and got up to speed, started on the legislation, when I talked to him, April 4th of 2017, he didn't know about the Gruden and Gruden study that was done in 2010 that laid out the economic and fiscal outputs for a ballpark in various places in Jack London, as well as Lady College, okay? And he, he didn't, he didn't know that. He didn't know that tax increment financing could be used on the stadium. He could have simply opted to have the city council ignite that same district under SB 628B all, which is on the books, but he didn't. He decided to go the harder route and go through the legislature, but what he got out of it was even more beautiful. He worked with Nancy Skinner and Rob Bonta, our assembly people, and he got out a device, a financial device, wherein all he has to do is pay property taxes, he activates tax increment financing. And if you take a look at the most possible expected rate of growth and assessed value for that area over a 40-year bond period, just assuming $2 billion in assessed value, and that's it, realistically, it's even going to be more than that when you start building around it. Not $12 billion, but it will be more than that. You're looking at $1 billion, $40 million in bondable revenue for 40-year bond issue. And you can take of that bondable revenue, you can take, using a debt coverage ratio of 2, $700 million. It's going to buy you your infrastructure repair. You should right now start lobbying for the infrastructure bill to pass, so you can use part of that for this project. It's not clear to me the city of Oakland is doing that, and it's not clear to me that David Cavall is asking the city to do that. And it's not clear to me that Dave Cavall has even went to Washington with Barbara Lee to lobby for the bill on behalf of baseball to make sure that it happens, okay? These are all work items that should be done now that are not being done. And it makes me wonder, who's mining the store in either place? You know, what I would expect to see if I walked in, even cyber-walked in to a room, I would expect him to see, have warm room, like I learned about when I was eight years old, reading the books of Hans Blumenfeld, the famous city planner and architect in Toronto, who had laid out how you have a war room with different maps, and how the facilities are going to be placed and looked, where police and fire are going to be activated, if you will. You had a war room to develop a city, and that's what we're talking about. But I'll bet you credits to Navy Beans, there's no war room for this project. They're quite literally doing it on the come, okay? And it's an insult to everybody involved that it's being done this way, but it's not a situation that's hard to determine that they don't have a war room, even a cyber war, where you can sort of virtually walk in and go to a place to hear, hear, see videos, see files. Anybody can go in there, has a, you know, kind of a lockbox of the password, right? That's the way you do these things, okay? There's nothing like that. But we're talking about city building. And for people to not realize that city building takes, like for example, the East Oakland Stadium Alliance, city building takes them also being in negotiations, saying, hey, look, we're going to lose our truck facility. We found land nearby that we can build it on, here's what the cost. And what they're doing is actually contributing the assessed value, I'll do this, say, hey, look, can you change the district boundaries just, you know, thus, to capture our area that we want to build with you? But I understand the East based, East Oakland Stadium lands would say, hey, look, the city in days never approached us that way, at least knowingly. But it's not clear that the reverse has happened either. There's a lot of non-planning here, there's a lot of talking, there's a lot of occasional piecemeal work, but it's not systemic. It's, and I'm not talking about the EIR, I'm talking about the whole planning effort, including financing, okay? Because Dave Cavall is allowed to go out and say something that he should never be saying, which is, well, the private, but project revenues will pay for the projects, will pay for the infrastructure and the community benefits, when in point of fact, they won't. The only scenario that would happen is if he, and this sounds like is what he's doing, is sending out the message that the A's are not going to pay property tax. It's 1%. The property tax is going to be higher in Phoenix, excuse me, in Portland, and in Las Vegas, or any other place they go. You have a beauty of a property tax system that Jarvis and Gann put in in 1978, they really robbed the school and education system of money it enjoyed. But if you can't pay a 1% property tax, you have no business talking about how you're actually going to benefit the community in terms of spending. And they're making it look like they've got this chunk of $455 million that they are going to contribute, which isn't the case at all. It comes from tax increment financing, and then, and Dave needs to, I've said this before, I've said it again, he needs to stop that language, because it makes it sound to anybody who actually knows this stuff, like, oh, you're not going to pay your property taxes, which are then used for tax increment financing? Hmm, you're going to get sales tax out of that facility, you're going to get user fees out of that facility, and the facilities around it, okay? Calculate the whole. But I'm telling you, the property taxes, as well as the unsecured property, property taxes, which come from the trucks, and then, of course, there are leases holds in the area, so we get to possess some interest taxes, all right? All of that has to be brought together, the A's, by their own language. Don't sound like they have a complete picture, and then Dave says, well, it's $12 billion, that's the build-out. If it's the build-out in the districts, I said before, guess what? That whole district's tax increment financing, I'll say it, I'll say it again, then it's a $9 billion plus revenue takeover 40-year period, assuming that it's $12 billion. You're not going to put all that $12 billion there at first, it's got to be phased in, which implies the existence of a master developer, sub-developer relationship, okay? All of this stuff needs to be worked out. These are the details that make this project go. Dave didn't tell that to Major League Baseball, Major League Baseball clearly doesn't get it, and they do need to do a reset, because he came in on a nice path. Then the pandemic happened, they lost money, I get that. But in order to gain back what they had, then they, the way they're going about it is not smart. And I can see a scenario where they wind up with nothing, absolutely nothing, because first of all, baseball is not the NFL. We're not talking about the National Football League. So what he has to do, and what Major League Baseball has to do, is love their home. Love your home, because if you don't love your home, it doesn't matter who gives you an overshore someplace else. They're not likely to fight as hard to keep, get you as they did with the NFL, and that's a fact. Baseball does not command ratings like the NFL, that's a fact. Baseball does not command attendance like the NFL across the board, okay? And that's a fact, okay? And that's where we are. Does that need to change? Sure, hey, maybe if baseball had more, more black players, you'd get across the board better attendance and better response and better ratings. Just a thought there, okay? Now I'm going off the rails a little bit, but I don't want to. I'll come back home. Let's finish what we're hearing, and I'll get some more comments here. Says Clipper is getting his butts kicked again, thanks for the, he's sweating the Suns game. Thanks for the, he's sweating the Suns game. Uh, Zenny, if the A's move to Vegas, will Oakland's reputation be hurt from business aspects since they're going to use three pro teams? Yeah. Because it will prove that we don't have the will and the initiative to complete big projects. We've had three bites at the apple. We had the Warriors and even, I remember, uh, roughly 28 years ago, there was talk of building a downtown arena for the Warriors, that didn't happen. Then we have, of course, the Raiders and now we have the situation. And what's the, the common denominator? The Oakland government. It doesn't matter if it's the county of Alameda. The common denominator is the Oakland government. All right, that's the common denominator. And we, we simply, what happened was that, you know, look, as wages went down, as our economy got tighter, as credit became harder to get, as the homeless situation came forward, and in particular, I want you to remember this, as we dealt with the snatching away redevelopment from Oakland, which Jerry Brown should not have done as governor, okay? On top of our installing a strong mayor system and ranked choice voting, what we now have is we have a government of activists who are used to assuming the power is someplace else other than with them. So when they get the power, they don't quite know how to use it to make a difference. And that hasn't, that's not true just now. That has developed in many ways since the year 2000, when Jerry Brown got in with, um, and then Measure X was passed to change the strong mayor. And then we got in 2010, we got ranked choice voting. And you'd say, what's the significance of it? It means that now that you have a mayor that can hire a chief administrative officer who used to be our city manager, the people who comprise your brain trust of public officials, the Ezra Report types that say, from the Raiders deal are gone. And in common practice, they stay with the city for a shorter period of time than they did in the past, before ranked choice voting and before even the strong mayor. We had a council manager former government. So our government structure, on top of the fact that we don't have redevelopment, has contributed to this. We had redevelopment, we could actually borrow from the redevelopment agency to close our deficit gaps. We could pay more money across the board. We had more money to go to other services, not just police. Now we're top heavy with police, okay? So we had a beautiful system. We destroyed it because of the perception that certain people and some people like me weren't supposedly getting what they were supposed to get. But get this, folks, when I got my job with the city of Oakland out of grad school, Oakland was ran by African-Americans. Oakland worked well. Oakland was always one thing, capital D diverse. And that's why people, white, came to Oakland. They wanted to be in a diverse environment. I know that because when I wrote for the Mont Clarion as a columnist in 1994, I ran a survey of 60 questions. And this was before the internet, of course, and yes, it dates me, thank you. And we received 600 returns through snail mail, which is a record for the Mont Clarion at the time. I dare say has never been broken. 64% of the people wrote in, the reason they wrote, they, they moved to Oakland or in Oakland, diversity, okay? And the majority of responses to my survey were overwhelmingly white. They wanted to be there because Oakland is diverse. And I think that says a lot for the beauty of the people that make up our city of Oakland and people watching this should be very, very proud of Oakland. That's your history. Those are your people and you have a legacy to live up to. We had economic diversity too. We didn't have a lot of top-heavy market housing, everything. We wanted it because we knew the money would flow, you know, and make our businesses and lives better. But what happened was Jerry didn't want, by his own admission, he didn't want subsidized housing in downtown. So what did he do when he became governor? He killed redevelopment. Oakland had one of the largest, if not the largest affordable housing budget in the state of California on an annual basis. The final year redevelopment, we had $110 million for affordable housing alone. And the beauty is we could take tax increment financing and use it to capture property taxes that now we have to give to different taxing agencies. We don't know how it uses or used or where it goes. We just know that it doesn't stay in Oakland like it used to, okay? We killed a structure that was the beauty of a city like Oakland to be diverse so that people got the services that they need. Do we have high crime? Yes, we did. Why? Because we lost manufacturing jobs. Do we do a good job for a time of trying to retrain people? Yeah, we actually did. We had as many as 120 government assisted, local government, not national, local government assisted in redevelopment, job training nonprofits in Oakland. Beautiful thing, okay? Beautiful thing. That's gone, folks. And the, and Mayor, Mayor Schaaf, I told Libby, I said, you know, you need to develop redevelopment. You need to bring it back. You need to use SB 2628 deal. None of that happened, okay? Let me get some more of your comments, all right? Maybe the city will then see revenue potential sports and they have other plans. It's not that high rate, it's just that the city doesn't know how. All right, I'm being blunt. It doesn't know how to see it. All right? MLB, NFL should tell owners to try to work out of your home, put a rule in place. That's a great idea, Art. Uh, because St. Louis and San Diego should still have charges. How you doing, Mr. Compton? Still owe you a such shirt, Ramirez, haven't seen you in a while. Mohammed says diversity means revenue. Yes, it does. Stay in Oakland. Says only foolish public officials with power struggle don't understand it. Words. Now let's go back to, uh, here what Mr. Cavall has continued to say here.
There has to be. That, that is just has to happen, you know? Um, and that's something that I think everyone can agree has to occur. And our fans are going to be better off for it. They're going to enjoy experience in a, in a new stadium. You know, I saw with the earthquakes where we played in a substandard facility and then we got, you know, PayPal Park, which became a huge success. So, you know, that's the same type of thing we want to create for our fans. How it transpires and even where it is, that's what the next, you know, three to six months are going to be about, getting to that. There's obviously going to be roller coasters as part of that. This is different than the way things have been over the last, you know, seven or eight years, but it's the part of the journey that we're on together. And we're hopeful that people can understand that we're trying to take it in a positive direction. And that, you know, me personally, I'm working very hard to have a solution that works for all our fans and we get a better outcome.
Well, that's the name of the game, is we're trying to do everything we can for the fans. And we know that the fans here in Oakland, California, love them some Oakland A's and are willing to die on that hill for them. They just want to feel like their thoughts align with the decision makers. And that was what was important for me, was to make sure that the fans can hear directly from you that, a- and to remind the fans as well, at times, it's not just a checkers game that's being played out in front of you. At times, there are people that are playing chess against other people that are playing checkers. And that's why I remind fans to read between the lines. So when they see what they see on social media that can fire them up, take two seconds and take stock and remind yourself of why you feel so passionately about what you're passionate about. Because we wouldn't be here today without a lot of the effort on the behalf of yourself and the folks who are helping push to get the fans what they want. So, uh, uh, let me, let me ask you this because we know that July 20th vote is coming up, uh, it's coming up sooner than later. Um, as we are on these fact finding missions in Las Vegas and potentially Oregon that we know about, and maybe others down the line, is there anything for the fans to read into should these fact finding missions continue after that July 20th vote?
Well, I think it's important to remember, and I've said this in other interviews, that, you know, the only trip that we have planned is to Las Vegas. There's no trip planned to Portland. So I don't know where that story came from or what happened, but that, that is completely inaccurate.
Okay, okay, yeah.
I've said that to many, I've said that, we've said it on background to different people in the press. I've even told people in the Las Vegas media about that. So like, I, I don't know where that came from or how that happened. Um, but that's just, it's just, it's just not a thing. So I don't, I don't know. Many people need to kind of understand that.
Oh, no, no doubt. And I, and, and you're correct. And let me correct myself. So there isn't a Portland, or not Portland, just Oregon in general, uh, meeting planned. I think that just comes from folks who start to throw darts at the dartboard and start to throw out, you know, destinations. Oh, Montreal, whoa!
Well, and they have a local group there and things like that. So that, I mean, that's just wild speculation. And, you know, we've been working very closely with the league on the locations in which we are looking. And right now that, that is Las Vegas, I'm in Las Vegas right now. Um, but you know, remember, we are still pursuing Oakland too. And we're working very hard on that. We're spending millions of dollars a month to make that happen and we've never been closer. But by the same token, um, there's a lot of risk and there's a lot of unknown. And there's United Community Benefits Meeting on Saturday for several hours. And there's a lot of concern about whether or not the waterfront is the location. It's a land use question. There's a lot of maritime interests that are very against the project. And all I would tell our fans is those people who are against the waterfront project, they are the happiest when our house is not in order and when there's internal strife. And so keep in mind, you know, we're going to have to stay together as a group, our fans, the front office, MLB, to ensure we get an outcome that works for our fans. And we're going to continue to do that and we're going to push really hard.
See, I got to stick here, that's where Dave really made a massive error, okay? He's the leader here. He's the project manager. He's the A's point person. The city of Oakland doesn't really have a point person. The mayor's put herself out as the point person. Her background shouldn't be that because simply, you know, mathematically, she's in many different directions at once. You have one person studying it like Dave, that's Dave's equivalent of the city. That's how you get these things done. That's why I'm nervous about this. There's no point person, okay? Um, hey, and not only that, where is the chief administrative officer? Libby went through a lot to get Ed Rieskin to come over. He was the former head of the San Francisco Metro Rail Organization, person I've known for some time. Uh, we have Berkeley ties, not, not close friends or anything. He's not a guy that calls me for anything, although he should, but that's his problem, not mine. Um, but he's also the chief administrative officer. This is the first time I've ever seen a project in Oakland related to sports facilities where the chief administrative officer was silent. You hear what I'm saying? Silent. Where's Ed? Hashtag where's Ed? Rieskin. Where's Ed? Okay, I may, I can write it down, write down here, all right? Where's Ed? Question like that, okay? Where's Ed? Okay? He's the chief administrative officer for the city of Oakland. The chief administrative officer either is the point person or appoints a point person. That's the way it's done. That's the way it's done. That's the way we've done it in Oakland. That's the way it's done in other cities in municipalities. Where's Ed? Okay? Maybe we need to start Ed Rieskin TV. Ed TV, right? Where's Ed? Where's Ed? Um, and back to what Dave said, though, he's talking about the East Oakland Stadium Alliance. And the East Oakland Stadium Alliance does want to negotiate with him. But he needs to, and I'm talking about what Dave Cavall needs to do, he needs to stop sending a message to them that, oh, they're the enemy and start sending olive branches and getting, and work on Getting to Yes. That's the problem here. The East Oakland Stadium Alliance and Dave Cavall both act like they never read Getting to Yes, the famous book on negotiation by the Harvard Business School, publication date of 1979, okay? Yes, it's a classic book. Everything that they're doing is against Getting to Yes. Establishing someone else as the enemy, thinking only about your position and not theirs, not trying to establish a win-win. Dave says he wants a win-win, but he's got to establish a win-win with them and stop thinking about them as the enemy. They have to start doing the same thing too. All right? And the mayor, really, you would say, who can get them together? Oh, wait a minute, doesn't the mayor do that? Yeah! Okay, so on this, you're going to ask, where's Libby? All right? There are a lot of, a lot of stuff going on here. Um, says, what about Emeryville Waterfront? You have hotels, shopping. Well, here's the thing, all right? Uh, the, where they want to sit has already been decided. Legislation is already there. Um, and Emeryville simply isn't in the cards because of the sunk timing costs. You heard Dave said he spent a million dollars a month on this, that it's taken to get this far at Howard Terminal. This isn't, picking a site isn't like turning a light switch on and off. It takes time. You have to get the approvals to even have the right to consider developing on it. This started with an ENA, an exclusive negotiating agreement that was granted to the Athletics by the mayor of Oakland. That was back in 2017, okay? After Peralta Community College District said, hey, look, we don't want, um, the Athletics and the students basically said, hey, look, we don't want them either because to them, having the A's on their site meant a more expensive lifestyle, higher housing costs, homeless problems that they felt the A's weren't going to solve and all that stuff. They said to me on camera, all right? The level of hate for the idea the students expressed was amazing. It was an eye opener. So Lady College? No. All right? But I asked this, where's Ed? Where's Ed? Where's Ed? All right. So folks, I'm going to close this out. It's 12:41. I appreciate your participation. Please share this around. And, uh, tomorrow, I want you to come because we're going to have Nate Miley, that's right, Nate Miley, my longtime friend Nate Miley, V Nate Miley, and I say this with exclamation point, here, is going to be on, he is Alameda County District Force Supervisor. He's the chairperson of the Oakland-Alameda County Coliseum Joint Powers Authority. And he's going to be on at 4:30 Pacific, 7:30 in the east. Nate Miley, that's tomorrow, which for some people is actually today. All right? So come back. Also, I'm going to have another live stream in a minute. I'm going to talk about the latest news regarding the bond issue and the bond payments for the hotel, excuse me, from the hotel tax, stadium hotel tax for Allegiant Stadium Bond of 750 million. Preview, I was right. All right? And you know what? I'll let you know when I'm wrong too. Sometimes that's more fun. Thanks, everybody. Subscribe to Zenny 62 if you haven't done so. And please bookmark OaklandNewsNow.com, which will be on an app very soon. There's an app for that. We'll see ya. That ends this broadcast.